Let's call the meeting order. This thing broke off.
Ms. Nyman, here. Ms. Scott.
Here.
Mr. Updegrove.
Here.
Mr. Zawada.
Here.
Mr. Brophy.
Here.
Ms. Dieroff.
Present.
Mr. Hemingway.
Here.
Mrs. Hogan. Mr. Panarelo.
Here.
Let the Legion of the United States of America introduce the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The Board of School Directors met in an executive session on the following dates: Tuesday, February 14, 2023. The topic was personnel. The meeting lasted 75 minutes. Wednesday, February 22, 2023. Topic was personnel. The meeting lasted 20 minutes. Tuesday, February 28, 2023. Topic informational. The meeting lasted 60 minutes. Recognition Showcase.
Hi, everybody. I'm once again excited to be here celebrating kids and the incredible things happening throughout our district. In just a few moments, I will turn the podium over to Middle School West's What's So Cool About Manufacturing team. But first, I would like to share some updates on student spotlights from previous meetings and share several new items as well. In September, I introduced all of you to Brianna Spees, our pediatric cancer warrior in kindergarten at Washington Elementary. At the end of January, Brianna had new scans after participating in the trial. And Mom reports that the scans were clear, which is fabulous news. So she is currently on a break from her trial treatment. That break lasts until April. So we are hoping that things remain stable, and she will be at one of our two March meetings to meet all of you. So stay tuned. I'll send out a message about wearing pink. We have some other surprises planned for her that night, too. But all seems to be going really well. So that's good news. In October, I introduced you to Dylan Klass. Dylan was among 16,000 semifinalists who met all of the requirements to move on to finalist standing in the National Merit Scholarship Program. I was there last week. Dylan received his certificate of merit and a letter informing him that he has officially been named a finalist and is moving on to the final selection process, which will name approximately 7,250 winners of scholarships nationwide. So he continues to move forward, and we wish him all the best. Fingers crossed some scholarship money is coming his way. But he's doing a really great job representing Boyer Town. So all good news. With that said, we're also pleased to announce that two of our seniors have been named as National Honor Society Scholarship semifinals, semi-finalists, and have been awarded $3,200. I get to be there tomorrow when Kalen Dre and Jazara Jenkins receive their certificates. And then stay tuned for a press release in next week's edition of It Bears Repeating. So another good senior moment happening. I wanted to take a moment tonight to publicly congratulate our athletics department and the girls' wrestling team on being part of PIA AA Sports History. In May of this year, Mr. Palladino made a presentation to this board regarding the possibility of making girls wrestling an athletic sport here in Boyer Town. At the time, there were fewer than 100 teams in Pennsylvania. In June, you approved his request. Throughout this winter athletic season, five lady bears have helped to pave the way for a new PIAA-recognized female sport. Last, the number of high school teams in Pennsylvania has surpassed 100. I think we were at 101 officially at last count. And last week, the PIAA Board of Directors unanimously approved on a first-reading basis a motion to accept sponsorship and jurisdiction of girls' wrestling as a sport. I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate our athletics department, our coaches, and, most importantly, the five young women who pursued their dreams and are paving the way for other female athletes to do the same thing. So kudos to them. All right, guys, you're up. Come on up a while. I'm pleased to introduce to you tonight our 2023 What's So Cool About Manufacturing team from Middle School West. In just a moment, the three young men will introduce themselves to all of you. I had the pleasure of meeting them yesterday under the guidance of their faculty advisors, Mr. Magro and Mr. Rothermel. I know I say this all the time, but I was really, really impressed. First of all, they are teen, tween boys. But again, I walked in there, and they were in the middle of a curveball. They received a curveball from their partner business yesterday and had to make some on-the-fly changes to work that was already done. And in five minutes, they had a plan for how they were going to fix that. They told me they wanted to speak tonight. They took responsibility for the presentation, and now here they are, which is really cool. And one of them is going to share the curveball that came their way. So you have that to look forward to as well. But I'm excited to introduce you guys, so come on up.
You guys can come on over. Good evening, everyone. My name's Tim Rothmel, along with Mark Magro. I'm one of the advisors for the What's So Cool About Manufacturing Club at Middle School West. And with our presentation up on the screen, we just have a timeline of what these eighth graders do throughout the year, and it's a long process. The end product is a two-and-a-half-minute-long video in which they are sharing with their viewers what is cool about manufacturing, specifically in the Berks County and Schuylkill County region. And this is actually a statewide contest, but we compete locally. And you can see they have various deadlines throughout the year. They have to learn how to create an A-roll, a B-roll. They have to create an outreach plan to reach out to the community. And then you'll notice there's a final submission. And then, like yesterday, when you're throwing a curveball, there's a final, final submission. In essence, their final video goes to the manufacturer. They scan it to see if there's any concerns, and then they throw any final suggestions to the group, and they'll have some things to share with you. Next week, we are seeking the community's support because from March 8th to 10th, there is a viewers' choice voting contest. And you'll have the ability, we'll give you some information, to show you where you can find this video, which we think you will love. And you'll have a chance to vote really as many times as you want. On March 21st, we're going to head to the Doubletree Hilton in Redding, and we will find out the results of our video. But we know whatever comes out of that award show, we are really proud of what these kids have done. So I did want to give you a quick overview of our five-year history with Middle School West in this. We've, one neat thing about this is our current seniors, we actually have a group who is our pioneers in this group. So they went to Misco Products. We've gone to Appealing Fruit, where they put sliced apples in the bags. Two years ago during the closure, we were with Eagle Metals and Mitsubishi Chemical Group last year. And then this year, what better place to go to for eighth-grade boys than R.M. Palmer Candy Factory? So I'm going to turn this over to Alaric. Let me introduce the boys here in this group. This is Alaric Seeshultz, Nicholas Seeshultz, and Stephen Barkowski. And they're going to share with you their tales about this club.
So my name, as you already heard, is Alaric Seeshultz, and this is Nicholas Seeshultz and Stephen Barkowski. We are the What's So Cool About Manufacturing team from Boyertown Middle School West. Over the past few months, we were asked to make a promotional video about a local manufacturer. We were given R.M. Palmer, the Chocolate Factory.
First, we brainstormed an idea for the whole video and wrote a script for it. To get ideas for a script, we watched what other schools had created for R.M. Palmer in the past, as well as watched a bunch of commercials. We knew we wanted to do something funny and thought it would be a good idea to try and tell a serious story, but have it silly. The idea of a detective felt like a serious storyline, but then we made it funny.
After we had the idea for the story, we went to the R.M. Palmer factory and saw things that looked interesting. We also learned about careers in manufacturing. After getting all of the foods, we added the foods to a two-minute and 29-second video that promotes why R.M. Palmer Chocolate Company is a great place to work, while informing our audience in a way we hope they find funny and interesting and entertaining. Thank you.
So I'm going to ask Stephen to do me a favor and come back up. Stephen, as was indicated on one of the slides, was cast as the director in their production. And I'm going to let him tell you a little bit about what literally happened yesterday as I was walking into their club. So if you want to go ahead and just explain what happened?
So we had a curveball about my name as the detective. We thought of Michael and Ike as related to candy, of Mike and Ices. And we got the curveball that the Mike Nikes are really a rival candy. So they thought of some Easter names. And we, as a group, from their suggestions, thought that E.B. Hopzalot was a good one.
But they literally had to go back in and re-film segments and make the changes in addition to all the work they've done since 10th period yesterday to be here today. So kudos to all of you. Who's speaking on the help they need?
Do you guys want to share the information up there? Or do you want me to do that? On our screen here, we do have some information for you. If you would like to support this group and see all the videos that come from the Berks and Schuylkill County area from March 8th to 10th next week. So if you want to stay up till midnight, at midnight on March 8th at 12:01, you can start voting as often as you'd like, and that'll go until 11:59 PM on Friday, March 10th. Like I said, check out these videos. Every year, the videos get better and better. And, you know, I mentioned those first four groups we've had. We built on the success of each of those groups, and the video that they've created is really outstanding. And, you know, I've heard them mention the word funny quite a few times, and I do think you'll get a good chuckle out of this one. But there are, you can actually check out the entire history of the contest, and you can see what other kids across the state are producing. If, depending on how things go on March 21st, there is a possibility that they would go to a state competition as well. So we'll just cross our fingers and see.
So if I just could for one second, I joked earlier about you guys being middle school boys, teens, all that stuff. I have one, I have a teen of my own, I understand. But honestly, the way you guys carried yourself yesterday, some strange woman walks into your club with an intern in tow, and Mr. Magro's giving you bad news, and I'm asking you, do you want to stand up in front of a room full of people? And everything was yes. Not a ruffled feather, not a moment of panic, not anything, just pride in your project. You couldn't wait to share your story. So I thank you for being here. I will be sharing all of the voting information via social media, both internal to the district and external to our community to provide support to the team next week for voting. And I just have to say, I did ask you this, if you caught it yesterday, I am not the jinx here. I'm saying that right now. Mr. Magro shared with me yesterday that he was proud of the video last year that won video best viewer choice and says this one crushes it. So we are excited to share. We will do that. We were not allowed to share even the teaser tonight because of regulations with regard to the project, but we wish you guys all the best next week. All right?
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thanks for being here.
Student representative report is next.
Hello, Board and community members. A lot of fun activities and fundraisers have happened this month within the entire district.
All right, so BASH has had so many fun events happen this month. I had the wonderful opportunity of participating in Impact Club-sponsored Impact Day. Over 50 participants signed up to partake in a wide variety of activities, including team-building activities, partner activities, group discussions, and much more. Each activity was entertaining, but also very inspiring, seeing as there is a learning aspect to them. Discussion were impactful and provided students with many different perspectives to each other to better understand one another. We would love to see more lessons that we learned from Impact Day implemented into everyday learning.
Student Council also had a fundraiser February, a month of helping out our community. The first full week of February was a coin drive. Each subject had its own day for the coin drive. Students would bring in coins, and the amount of time it took the teacher to count the coins was the free time that the students had that day. I'm happy to say the coin drive went extremely well, and the students seemed to enjoy the free time that they got. BASH raised over $3,532, and sophomores had the most money raised with $1,131.
This past month, I was grateful to be able to obtain a ticket to the Saturday performance of this year's musical, Grease. From the incredible acting to the amazing props, this performance was not to be missed. Following closely to the original plot, it also had the touch of Boyertown theatrics that makes every BASH performance stellar. I can't wait for them to wow us even more with next year's performance. Great job to everyone involved.
Middle School West had a lot of exciting events coming up in March. Annie Junior is going to be performed at West on March 24th through the 26th. The students have been doing a great job at the preparation and practicing for the special event. Get your tickets before they're all out. Middle School East did have an event called Hoops for Hearts. The event was on the 10th, and it's a three-on-three basketball tournament. The money raised went to the American Heart Association, and it was a very successful event, and the students are excited for next year. So in the last voting meeting, the amount of half-days was a concern to parents as well as board members. Olivia and I decided to ask students their thoughts on half-days. Everyone agreed 20 half-days is a lot, but half-days are still important to us students. BASH students have said that on half-days, students do reviews for tests coming up, or in some AP and DE classes, they do the same amount of work as a normal school day. Usually, they have more homework on half-days. Half-days are also not all about the work. Students have to watch their mental health very closely, and we all need a mental health day once in a while. Half-days give students that mental break, leaving school early and being able to chill out from the week.
By the time our next report comes, we hope to have hosted a student luncheon where we'll be able to gather more student feedback. It's a pleasure to be here, and we thank you all for listening. Have a great night.
Thanks, ladies. Next up, we have Public Comm period number one. Donia Savage.
Good evening. First, I wanted to commend the Board for putting the resolution about cyber charter funding on your agenda. I think it's important to say that there's nothing inherently wrong or bad about cyber schools. They're a great option for the varied instructional needs of children. But the way they're funded is really unfair and takes away precious resources and funding from our public ed students. So thank you for doing that. I look forward to seeing a unanimous vote on that. Secondly, I wanted to comment on your proposed change to Policy 006 regarding how to get things off of the consent agenda. So from a historical perspective, the consent agenda is a relatively new construct at Boyertown. We put it in place maybe six, seven years ago, just guessing, that is historically new, right? And it worked pretty well. And we were following Robert's rules, which your policy says that you follow Robert's rules, which indicates that if someone objects to something being on the consent agenda, it comes off. And so I think if you, it's redundant to have to even put that in your policy, but the way that it's put in now with needing three board members to object is contradictory to Robert's rules. So thank you very much.
Mrs. Savage, we'd just like to add with respects to the resolution for charter school funding reform. In February 2021, the 23rd of February, the Board did adopt a resolution for charter school reform. The change in language between 2021 and this current year, it's a bit with respects to the amount of monies. So it really is the same language, but we are adopting one that is just more current with respects to the amount of money that is being utilized. So just wanted some clarification that it wasn't new, because if you ever went onto the map, you could see that Boyertown Area School Board had adopted a resolution. So just wanted to share that.
Approval meeting minutes.
Hogan moves.
Nine in seconds.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Ms. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Panarelo.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Vero One project update.
Thank you, Mr. Panarelo. It's my pleasure to reintroduce Mr. Jeff Hawes. If those of you remember, Jeff was our support of our IT network for, we were just kind of brainstorming. I think it was almost two years that he was here to basically run our IT department in the transition between our supervisors and directors. So it's a pleasure to bring him to you tonight. If you remember back to June of '22, we did a presentation on the wiring network that was happening around the community. I will say, a lot of the information that was brought to the attention were concerns about the wiring that was being laid between our buildings. But we're happy to tell you that the project is done, and Jeff is here to talk about all the celebrations and the benefits of having the project done. So, Mr. Hawes.
Thank you very much. So there won't be any celebrations, or no parades or anything planned, but I do have some good news to share tonight. And as Mr. Stout stated, this is the wide-area network. So when I was here in June, I gave you a brief overview. But I can give you that in, I'll say, layman's terms today. So this is the network that connects all the Boyertown buildings together so that we don't have to have internet at every single building. We combine them together to share resources. That's not a new concept, but what is new is that we have a new provider. So why did we change WAN providers? And this is, again, I think that's verbatim, the same slide that I presented in June, but as a refresher. So the reason that we did this, there were a few. The first one, it's a cost savings to the district. So you'll save roughly $34,000 a year with the new provider over the term of that contract, which is 10 years with some optional extensions. The speed, currently, it's planned for 10 times the increase in terms of speed between the buildings, the nine district buildings. And then visibility, resilience, and redundancy. So the district staff now has much more direct access to that network and what's happening on it, whether it is up or down, whether it's performing as it should be. Versus previously, we were reliant on a third party. If we had an issue, we'd have to sort of figure out if we thought it was them, then contact them. It was a much slower and more painful process to troubleshoot. The resilience comes down to the sort of flexibility over the life of this network that 10 times could become 100 times towards the end of the contract with some relatively small changes. A lot of that will be dependent on needs of the district as well as budget. But ultimately, you now have that flexibility built in. And then redundancy, there's already some redundancy in place between two of the district, what we consider hub sites. So that if one of them were to go offline or one internet provider was to go down, the second one could relatively quickly be brought up and continue to provide internet for the district during that outage. So we've had some of those pieces over the years, but it never really worked as well as it should. The redundancy will continue to increase. Unfortunately, like many things in the world, we're waiting for equipment to show up that was ordered almost a year ago. Once that equipment shows up, we'll get even further benefit. But I assure you, as of where we're at today, we're better than we were one year ago. So then, what you'll see later in the agenda, you may have already seen, why is there a contract amendment for the Vero contract? So there was RFP language that we put in place for the benefit of the district and for the project that included some delivery penalties if it wasn't delivered on time. As is pretty common with this type or virtually any construction, there's lots of delays that happen. There's weather, there's local permitting, there's also power, the power poles, which I believe is MedEd here. It was, there's MedEd permitting that you have to go through. It's called a make-ready process. There's also access to buildings, say if the district is closed or after hours or having the right keys or personnel to access it. All of those things are pretty typical. Fortunately, having some experience in these, we saw some of it coming, wrote the language to be beneficial to the district, ultimately with the goal of keeping the district whole and not incurring any additional costs. And the good news, the celebratory portion of this is the last bullet item. So I've worked with this company over the last several months. We did go live, and they completed right after New Year's this year, about four months later than we thought was going to happen the last time I was here. Again, no fault of any one party. What we were able to do is secure a one-time payment to Boyertown of almost $139,000. And I can say, from my perspective, it's more than I thought they would do. If I was on the other side of the table, I wouldn't have done it. Hopefully, this isn't on YouTube tonight that they see. But quite honestly, it's a great deal to the district. It's $139,000 of found money. The way that I came up with that amount, it's effectively what the, keeping the other provider online costs the district. Only, we were going to pay something during those six months, or four months, rather, that they were late. So again, this is the good news portion of it. Once that amendment is approved and signed, they're ready to write the check so that they can close this project out, which, again, I think is good for all parties. I think that's all I have. Yeah. So I'd be happy to take any questions. I just wanted to be here because I was the face you saw last time when there were some other questions. I wanted to be here to present the good news portion of it and just to tell you that it has wrapped up, and you'll now incur those savings for the next 10 years. All right?
Thanks for staying on topic.
Thank you.
I want to thank you because I know you went out that day yet to that house and rectified that issue that was there.
I did, yes.
So thank you for that. How has it been working since it's been up and running? Any issues?
No, we haven't had any issues. I'd have to look at a calendar. I think we've been, again, there's portions the district is responsible for, they were done January 2nd. We made our changes, I think it was like the third Saturday, we were here all day running around the district, making those changes. To date, hopefully, there's some wood in here. We haven't had any outages, and there will be. I'll assure you, there will be an outage at some point. A squirrel's going to chew through a line, a telephone pole's going to go down due to weather or an accident. It will happen. That will be when we measure their responsiveness. And again, we have requirements in the contract that they must respond in a certain number of hours to restore it. So again, I'm pretty confident in the company so far and the service that they've provided.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When's the remaining equipment due to come in?
It changes every month. I don't know, again, for those of you in the purchasing world, every month, they tell us it's about two months out. And I think the most recent update, yeah, it's like Money Pit, yeah. It's April is the last update I saw, but I really won't believe it until I see tracking numbers.
So it doesn't mean it's of a high liability then?
No, no. We're operating in virtually, with the same equipment we had, we had, my company, we'd loaned the district some equipment at no charge that we had available to make sure we could get up and running in transition. So again, we're ahead of where we were one year ago with the prior provider.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. All right. Thank you so much.
Next, New Hanover Upper Frederick Elementary School Water System update.
Hello, I'm Scott Shield, Director of Facilities, and with me I have Karen Pollack from System Design Engineering. We have been working collaboratively on this water system at New Hanover. The current system was put in in 1991. It's 32 years old. It was a good design at the time, and it's outdated and is in poor repair. We, Karen and I have looked at many different options on what to do with the tanks themselves. We looked at rehabbing them, but due to the age and condition, that was not possible. We looked at going with smaller hydro pneumatic tanks, and that was not going to give us the amount of storage that we needed. We also looked at using UV as a disinfection instead of UV, instead of chlorination, but that did not give a disinfection byproduct, so that would not be good for the system we have. We, the tanks are quite large, and we ran into a lot of issues with trying to figure out how to remove them out of the space, because where the, when they originally were brought in, that area is now a courtyard, so it is no longer the front of the building. So it appeared that they had actually removed the wall to bring those tanks in, so replacing them in kind was also not a possibility.
And it's really expensive. Those hydro pneumatic tanks are very, very expensive to replace.
On December 5th, the facility department got a call that one of the tanks had semi-collapsed back because a leg had given out under the weight of the water. It was caught on a strut in the ceiling, which prevented it from falling all the way. We were able to stabilize the tank, cut it from the manifold, and decommissioned that tank. At that time, we found that the tank next to it was leaking, so we drained that tank as well, valved it off. So currently, we are working on two 750-gallon tanks that are, we have had no complaints on the pressure up to date, so they seem to be holding their own. The, no. So this kind of expedited our search for a solution. So the solution that we have found, which would work the best, and I can allow Karen to speak a little bit on the new design, involves 750-gallon tanks, which are plastic, they're not the big hydro pneumatic tanks.
The 750-gallon tanks that he's referring to would replace the hydro pneumatic tanks. They're atmospheric tanks, so you will need a booster pump afterwards to provide the pressure to your distribution system or your school. Also needed, as you are upgrading your system, is chlorine contact time. With a simple disinfection, you're required to have 20 minutes of chlorine contact time. Previously, when this system was designed, they allowed the hydro pneumatic tanks to serve in that capacity, but in the last 30 years, regulations at the DEP level, EPA and DEP level, have become more restrictive over time, and there's more requirements that are needed, and they no longer allow hydro pneumatic tanks to be used in the volume calculation when you're doing that chlorine contact time. So we're moving to pressurized baffle tanks, and when I say baffle, it's just, they assign a certain baffling, I know I'm getting a little technical, maybe I should, do you want me to simplify? But we're bringing the system up to date to meet the requirements that are now in place at the state and federal level. In 2018, things got even more restrictive as a result of Flint, Michigan. The Safe Drinking Water Act went through a big update of 2018. So there's a lot more regulation that you guys need to meet, and it's coming down to the smaller size systems, which is what you are.
This is a diagram of our, what we're proposing, the build. As you can see at the bottom left-hand corner, those are the baffle tanks she spoke about for the 20 minutes of contact time. In the upper left-hand corner, you can see those are the atmospheric tanks, and right in front of that would be your pump skid with the redundant VFD-driven pumps.
Do you want to talk about treatment, or we're going to get into that next one?
Yeah. So as she said about requirements and things becoming more stringent on our water systems, one of the new things that has come up in DEP is iron and manganese. So we, to performance monitor equipment, they required us to test quarterly for that, for waters, if you have a water softener, you're required to test for performance. So we were, like I said, we were testing quarterly. In August, we had an exceedance. We checked our softeners and found that there was a motor that was not working in the softener, so we repaired that, were able to lower the numbers. We also flushed the resin at that time, we were able to lower the numbers even more. So when the tank collapsed, when we, back, fast forward to December 5th, when the tank collapsed, it caused more turbulence in the system, and we feel that that may have caused our numbers to go out of whack, because our numbers were way out of whack. The DEP then required, is now requiring a permit for iron and manganese to be removed from our water, because when they tested the raw water, they found that we were above, what was it, one, one between iron and manganese. So they're requiring a permit, a permissible system now.
Right. So as a result of an exceedance, they go into their protocols, and they require treatment. So now that you're on their radar, you're obligated to resolve the situation.
So the DEP has requested an agreement with the district that we get treatment in place by August 31st. So that is a document that will need to be signed, as well as we need the DEP to approve our permit. We are looking at a different resin for ion exchange, which is currently a water softener's style system. It's the simplest to maintain, and it's what we were trying to stay with, but the DEP needs to approve it.
Any type of water treatment system that's put into place above simple chlorination is, you are required to have a permit. So we are in the process of putting that together. We have, I don't know if we have before you now, but I sent to Scott the permit application, and that's just one of the parts and pieces of all the documentation that is necessary in the permit application.
Do you guys have any questions for us?
So you're, from my understanding, you're replacing the tanks, correct, with the polyplastic tanks? I thought I heard you say earlier you can't get those old tanks out, or is that?
We have to plasma cut them.
So you are going to plasma cut them and get them, okay.
That, we have to take them out in pieces.
Yeah, you're not going to, you're not going to ban them in place?
No, you can't pick them up and take them out.
Any salvage value to the metal?
We'll try and scrap it if we can.
Okay, let's scrap it, because they're pretty big.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're very large.
Yeah, so, but you're not, you're not banning them in place, that's fine. Okay, thank you.
When do you think you're going to start this project, if you get the DEP permit?
Our goal is June, right?
We're, we're trying to push DEP. Now, when you put in a permit application, they have 120-day review period. It's a process, it's a months-long process. You put in your, it's called a construction permit, and they provide you a, or they give you a construction permit at the end of that, and then there's a second part, once you construct it and put it into service, they give you an operations permit. Now, because you are a public entity, you're going to be required to bid this for any projects over $25,000, $21,000 or $22,000, I forget what it is, but you're going to be over that, you're going to be required to publicly bid this project, so that adds time as well. So we might get into a situation where we're bidding it and waiting for the permit at the same time. There's a little bit of jeopardy in that if DEP comes back and wants changes, you kind of have to work that into the contract documents as well. So it is a months-long process. Then, once you sign the contract, then you start to order your equipment, and then there can be lead times on the equipment. So we're crossing our fingers that we're going to be able to do this. The plan is to do it starting in June, so that you're doing it when the kids are not in school. Roughly, we have an estimate from a contractor that we're working with that it would take about a week of shutdown to remove everything, put the new equipment in place, and then install the piping, do all the piping modifications that need to be done. At the same time, I don't know if you talked about, we, your well pump is 30 years old. You might as well replace that at this time. It's going to be, especially since you have contractors doing the work, it's going to be a little bit tough to get at the location of where the well pump is, because it's on the inside of that courtyard. So anytime you do modifications and update, you run into challenges, construction challenges, and there's, there's a few really tricky challenges involved in this project, because everything is, it's a small space, small space that we're working with, and we're trying to get equipment in there, in that physical space.
Well, how many people have you ever got bid on this? How many bidders are?
You put it out for public bid, and you don't know how many, I mean, however many.
Is it a well pump? Is it in a, in a well, or are you talking above ground pump?
It's a submersible pump.
It's a submersible?
Mm-hmm.
120, 100 feet deep, 2 horsepower.
100 feet deep, 2 horsepower.
Is it inside the building?
It's, it's.
And the courtyard?
On a little cutout next to the building, but it's inside the courtyard.
Okay.
So you can't get a lift truck, a crane truck in there to pull it out. It's, it's going to be a little tricky.
Can the DEP be pushed to do this sooner, or is their date set in stone?
They have said that they will work with it, so I can't really speak for DEP. I know from experience with other projects right now, they're taking all the way up to their 120 days plus some.
Do you have any idea whatsoever on what the cost might come out to? I mean, you've done lots of these projects and so forth, so.
Yeah, this is a little on the smaller size from what, we, SDE does a lot of municipal work. Something of this scale, I'm going to put it in the 150 to 175 range, okay?
Thank you. And we're not going to hold you to that.
Well, that's a good thing, because every time I say something like that, public bidding right now is a crazy thing, and I've seen some higher projects kind of out of line with what we thought they should be since COVID. I don't want to blame it on COVID, but it's just, that's the way of the world right now.
You're in the 25 to 125 estimate range, right? Percent estimate range right now? This are all your projects?
150 to 175, okay.
No, it's not a percentage. When you give us $150,000, you can be 25,000, 25,000 to 125 percent, so.
You're right, you're right, exactly.
It's a wag, I get it.
It's tough, so yeah, don't hold me to that number, but that's where it should be. Where it actually is, is anybody's guess.
And we did look at trying to bring public water to the school, but that was completely feasibly undoable. It actually comes up Hoffensale Road to Church Street, and it's almost exactly a mile from Church Street to New Hanover. Yeah, it was just.
Trenching costs.
Yeah, it was expensive. It was undoably expensive.
That includes the well, that price, the well, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Has the township contacted? Because I know they've been aggressively running lines all over New Hanover at this point. Do they have any plans to bring it down?
I talked to both the township and I talked to Aqua, who supplies their public water, and the township actually told me to talk to Aqua, and they said, they gave me the price. It was a million dollars just to lay the pipe.
For the extension, mid lane extension.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Treasurers report.
We are without a treasurer currently. Our accounting manager has resigned. There is an appointment on tonight's agenda to appoint Carrie Fox as the accounting manager, and at the next meeting, pending her approval tonight, she will be appointed as the treasurer. The financial reports are attached. I can give you a brief overview of activity for January. Earned income tax collection for approximately $986,000. Special ed subsidy from the state was $665,452. Total expenses for the month were $9,096,544, of which 70% of it was related to salaries
Nyman moves.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Deroff?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, under this. Excuse me, I have a question. May I ask a question? I ask for item C and D to be removed off the consent agenda. I had two other people, two other board members that were also agreeing to that. I was denied to have it done. So my question to the solicitor is, how do you get something taken off of the consent I was hoping not to go this route, but I'm looking for leadership, not dictatorship.
Technically, the chair rules on these kinds of determinations, and I believe that we are going to be addressing as part of, yeah, as part of our itemized agenda, the first reading of policy 006, which addresses how we're going to be handling that in the future. I do, I do want to make a parenthetical comment. I have heard and have received certain public comments about our policies and whether or not we need to be consistent with Robert's Rules. The district has adopted Robert's Rules, and if you read Robert's Rules literally, Robert's Rules say that one individual can remove something from the consent agenda. However, in our adoption of Robert's Rules, if you look at our policy requirements, and we have the perfect right to do that, that we have adopted Robert's Rules insofar as it does not interfere with our policy adoption, which means, in short form, that our policies can supersede Robert's Rules. So ultimately, we need to gain clarity on these issues by the adoption of policy to address this issue. So it is my understanding, what you're saying right now, that you made a request with two other individuals to remove something from the consent agenda in advance of today's meeting?
Yes.
And how was that communicated?
I sent an email to the superintendent.
To the superintendent to remove it from the consent agenda?
And she checked with board leadership.
And the board leadership denied the request? Well, I certainly don't have the power to compel it. Right now, the board policy, which once again is more specific than Robert's Rules, says that for non-controversial items, the, that there is authority to create a consent agenda for non-controversial items. So the question is whether this is a controversial item or not. So the question is whether this is a controversial item or not. And I believe the board chair has determined that this is not.
So to give some insight, and Ms. Torres, correct me if I'm wrong, you only received one email from one person.
Correct.
So only one person emailed. And going off of I've only been here a year, past leadership, when one person tried to remove something, we never removed it. So actually only one person made a motion or emailed to do this and that's why it remained off until we clear up the policy hopefully today.
The email stated there was two other individuals. I was never asked who they were. And no, they did not send each one separately, but it was well known that there was three of us.
Well, that's hearsay, I don't, I agree with hearsay.
I can show you the email.
I believe the email, but if no one else is on it, if they don't say it, it's hearsay.
Thank you, Mr. Panarello. I just have a question, um, cause I'm actually reading 006 as it's written right now and it says, "Any school director shall be permitted to enter discussion on any subject on the meeting agenda." That's number two under presiding officer slash meeting facilitation. So the way I'm, the way I understand this is that any school director is permitted to enter discussion on any subject on the agenda, no matter where it is. I don't know. Yeah, I'm not the expert.
Yeah, I, I think you're, I, I think you're, you need to look at the policy in its totality. There's nothing to prevent Ms. Duroff from raising this issue in board comments or later on in the agenda. The question, that does, so that, that language allows that to occur. The question is whether or not the individual action of one board member writing an email mandates the chair to remove it from the consent agenda or not. That's really the issue in question. And the question also is, um, the requestor is asserting that there were two other people supporting that request. We're here all right now, can those individuals see if they support the request to remove it from the consent agenda? Now, do we have a, a requirement that this be done by a certain time and that you can't remove something from a consent agenda afterwards?
The required time per the policy is eight o'clock in the morning and I do believe that the email was received prior to 8:00 AM.
No, no, that's not my question. Once the eight o'clock, once the 8:00 AM time period passes, are we taking the position that board members do not have the right to bring that up at a public meeting? There's nothing in there that addresses it?
Nothing.
Okay, we can certainly discuss that prospectively. But now we have a, I presume you're making this request right now? Ms. Duroff?
I, I'll make it over and over and over again. I'll make it now.
Okay, so which items do you want to remove from the consent agenda right now?
Items C and D I had asked for. Item C was explained tonight with the gentleman speaking. But that's what I had asked for originally, so it would just be item D.
And are there any other individuals who are supporting Ms. Duroff's request to remove those items from the consent agenda?
Brophy supports.
I would support her, Ruth is good. I think she wants to hear some clarification as, again, I, I'm looking for solutions through conversation and I think that she deserves that opportunity to ask some questions and clarify some items to help protect some of these things in the future.
So now we have heard from three individuals who would like to have something removed from the consent agenda and ultimately it's up to the chair as to whether the chair will recognize these after the 8:00 AM deadline. It's your fault.
Are we still operating under this being that it's perceived as controversial?
I think that's our.
That's where the.
That, that, that's technically, I believe, the policy we're still operating under.
So I'm just wondering how the overnight trip's controversial? Has it been controversial in the past, is there? Lisa, go ahead.
Just, just to clarify, so we're saying that for it to be removed according to policy, it has to be controversial, has to be.
That's what our policy says.
Right, yeah.
And that's why it's, the word controversial is not easily defined and that's why we need clarity in the policy and that's why we should be addressing it specifically.
Right.
So we, to avoid, to avoid this very issue.
Right, okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
I believe Mrs. Duroff is, is questioning the expenses and what the students, what the district is paying, if I'm not mistaken.
I, I wanted some clarity on a couple of things. I mean, we're, am I allowed to?
Yeah, well, whatever the chair allows you to ask.
There, there's four chaperones here. At a hundred dollars a day equals $700. I, I just wanted to know how you figure, how they figured that out. That should be $400. It's the same thing for the registration and housing. And before I approved this, I wanted to know what the magic number is and I don't, couldn't find the administrative regulations for how many children, students have to go in order to have a trip. There's a, there's a number, a percentage, and I don't know what that is. I couldn't find it. And it's not on here.
So you're questioning the youth and government trip to Harrisburg?
No, to Disney. I was questioning Disney's trip.
So the purpose of this trip is for approximately 200 BASH students. These are seniors that are going on their senior trip to Disney. And I'm not sure what your other question is and if.
I think she's saying the numbers don't add up.
If you have four chaperones and it says here a hundred dollars a day, that should be four, $400, not 700. That's on the.
I think that's actually on the Harrisburg trip, not the.
That's on the Harrisburg trip, yes.
Harrisburg trip, not the Disney trip.
Right. But the Disney trip, I wanted to know what the number is. I don't wanna prove something without knowing what it is.
There are seven chaperones on the Harrisburg trip, so that's where the $700 comes from?
It's not what our paperwork says. Sorry.
Okay, on the agenda, it's stated as there are seven chaperones. There are only, as far as the district expenses, the substitutes needed varies. There's three substitutes that would be needed on Thursday and four that would be needed on Friday.
Right.
So those, those rates are quoted separately.
Right, I got that.
As far as the Walt Disney trip, the number of substitutes needed and therefore the district expense is unknown at this time because we only have an approximate number of students that will be traveling, so we don't know yet how many chaperones will be participating in that trip. I think that's the question.
No, that wasn't the question. No, I wanna know how many students. There's a number.
I thought, I thought it was 200.
It's 200 plus, they're still gathering.
What's, how many students are in 12th grade? How many are eligible to go?
Over 500.
Okay, there is a percentage that before the trip can be made, that they have to, to meet that number. And that's what I'm trying to find out, what is that number?
Historically, I, I think Ms. Duroff is correct. Historically, the district has established percentages in order to meet the eligibility thresholds for a trip so that, you know, for example, if there were only three students who were going on the extreme, that we wouldn't sponsor a trip for that base, basis. And I think she's asking, what is that threshold number?
And unfortunately, I'm not able to answer that question this evening. If I would have had that in advance, I would have been able to research that and be able to give you an answer, so I will have to get back to you.
Thank you.
Still want to remove?
Pardon me?
Still wanna remove?
Yeah, we had the discussion. Thank you.
Or Town Stadium?
Okay, under the superintendent's report and consent agenda, the administration recommends that the board of school directors accept a $10,000 donation from the Boyertown Stadium Committee. The monetary donation will go towards the purchase of AED devices that can be used throughout the district as determined by the administration. Berks County Community Foundation grants. We're looking for the board of school directors to accept the Berks County Community Foundation's awarded disbursement in the amount of $1,000 to represent one or more grants from the following funds. A $500 grant from the Berks County Association of School Retiree Scholarship and Grant Fund awarded to Earl Elementary for the Total Experience Learning Project. $500 grant from the Public Library Foundation Fund for Instructional Innovation awarded to Middle School East for the Loud in the Library Program. First Amendment of the Vero Fiber Networks LLC Master Service Agreement. Board of School Directors approve the First Amendment to the Vero Fiber Networks LLC Master Service Agreement. And also looking for overnight trips as listed. So looking for the approval for the consent agenda as presented.
Hogan motions.
Zawada seconds.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes, as long as it meets a number of student requirements.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Under the itemized.
Under the itemized agenda, looking for the board of school directors to approve policy 006, meetings for first reading and move them forward to March 14th, 2023. Committee, the whole meeting for second reading approval.
Any motion approved? Discussion?
What changes were made to that then from the last meeting?
The language that is in the policy 006, six, under number 11, superintendent's report consent agenda. The addition is a written request for an item to be moved from the consent agenda to the itemized agenda must be made by a minimum of three seated board members, no later than noon of the day of the agenda being posted to the public. The written request should be directed to the superintendent or designee and copied to the entire board.
I would recommend that based upon what was raised today, you may wanna add additional language that's saying, what happens if somebody makes a request after the deadline? That it would not be permitted or would be permitted? So that we're not faced with the issue that we were faced with this evening. I think the intention is to require somebody to make this, your request to remove it on the, off of the consent agenda so it be published and everybody knows about it in advance of the meeting and that if you fail to notify that, then it remains on the consent agenda. I think that was, that is the intent, but that's what the board needs to discuss as part of this policy. That's how we, the rule we want to follow.
Thank you. So just back to Robert's Rules of Order. I know that we can make board policy. However, I think for just purposes of functioning, it makes sense that if a board member wants, one board member wants to remove it within the time allotted, of course, then it should be moved at the request of one member. I don't know why we need three members, what we need to create all of this, all of this issue around something that should really be simple. A consent agenda is supposed to be for things like minutes. And to me, this just doesn't make sense. We should all, if we have questions, we should all be able to ask them regardless of if it's one person with a question or three people. That's my opinion.
I think regardless, you gotta change the verbiage because when it says controversial, that changes things. So no matter what, it has to be changed.
No, I agree with you on that. But I just feel that we should just make it simple. At the request of any board member, by, I know that there are procedural like times and whatnot. By this time, it gets removed off of a consent agenda and put on the itemized agenda. And if people, if there's enough board members that don't wanna discuss it anymore, then we use the procedure to end discussion and vote. Or move, you know, I mean, I just don't see why we need all of this. All, all of this. I don't know, it just seems to make a lot, it takes a lot of time, it makes a lot of controversy. I don't know why we need all this. We should just follow the Robert's Rules of Order and move forward.
I think we agreed last meeting that it was gonna be three. Mrs. Hogan has always been against that since it was initially in. She won't let go of that. I think we've got, we went around the room several times and got three. I think it's not, it's not hard to understand, three. And if you as one board member can't get two other board members to agree with you that it needs discussion, then, then it probably doesn't need discussion. We have had several times where we've pulled things out and discussed it three or four different times because a member didn't agree with how we ended up with the discussion and moving forward. So no, I don't agree that one person should be able to do it because then can, we can continue to have policies pulled back in and discussed infinitum. And I think that's what we're trying to get away from.
Again, if you understand Robert's Rules of Order, there are procedures within that to stop discussion. That's why I say I think we should just be understanding Robert's Rules of Order, following them. And it would eliminate all of this constant discussing of things that are, I mean, if, if Ruth wants something removed, let's remove it and let her ask her questions. And if we're not interested in that discussion anymore and we have a board majority, sorry to call you out, Ruth, and we have a board majority, then we can stop that discussion and move forward. That's why, that's why the Rules of Order exist.
I can remember under past board leadership, three of us did send the president email stating we wanted something removed and it was not removed. So I'm for whatever's gonna make this the simplest. If it's one person, let it be one person. You have a couple minute discussion and it can be solved and, 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 and. Let's make this simple and get it over with.
Just want, look at our past videos and see how that doesn't work.
I'm just gonna comment that typically there are things that are presented to the board in our weekly newsletters. And I would ask from the administrative end that if there are things that are in the newsletter weekly that have questions, to please ask and then will give us time to be able to gather the information and to be able to provide it back to you in a timely manner and answer it to the entire board so that everyone can see that the, what the question was and the answer provided. I have no problem with not ever providing a consent agenda. In fact, we've been moving things to itemize. This week in our discussion, we haven't had controversial comments over, you know, field trips and questions have usually been delivered to me in advance. With respect to Vero, didn't believe that that was to be controversial because we were receiving monies. receiving monies back. So I just feel that if there's communication to me and my administration prior to any board meeting, it can make our meetings run so much smoother because I would be able to deliver all answers to each one of you. And, and still, if that wouldn't be clear enough and more clarification, then I believe that that would be a reason for it to be on the itemized agenda. Sorry, Mr. President.
So I think we should, we should at least have the verbiage about when it's got to end and that we wouldn't be opening up later. You done with discussion? We got a motion? I got it.
I was just going to say, the reason that this continues to go on and on is because we keep discussing things that we kept discussing. The idea of the consent agenda is once it's exhausted, it's, it's over. It's to expedite our voting process so that we're not all here to, God knows what time. So these are items that we've discussed at past meetings and they keep getting brought up and brought up and brought up. And if we keep pulling things off this agenda, we're never going to get anywhere, we're never going to get anything done. So it's just, it's just a way, and Ms. Savage, I think it was a way to expedite the meeting process was the true intent of it. Once it makes it on there, whether you agree or disagree, the consent of the majority of the board, okay, this is what we're going with, this is what the vote is going to be. So that's just my two cents about why, why some of these items continuously keep being brought up. Once it's on the consent agenda, it, it, the discussion is exhausted. Just my two cents.
Right. So the point is no member should ever be forced to vote no to other items that they would vote yes for typically because something that they object to is on the consent agenda and is, is not being removed. That's the issue at hand. It's, it, it's not just discussion, it is about recorded votes and that's the real problem here. No member should ever have to vote no to a consent agenda because they object to one item. That's, I believe, why Robert's Rule says that things can be pulled with one member.
I find some, historically, with due respect, you don't like being on the losing vote of things and you won't let it go. That's why some of these items in the past have continuously gone on.
Quite frankly, Mr. Hemingway, historically, I disagree with you. And you can.
Your entitlement to disagree, so I'll make a motion.
That's fine. Yeah.
I'll second.
So the way that I have it noted per.
Sorry, who was first?
The way that I have it written per the direction of our solicitor and Board President, a written request for an item to be moved from the consent agenda to the itemized agenda must be made by a minimum of three seated board members no later than noon of the day of the agenda being posted to the public. This written request should be directed to the superintendent or designee and copied to the entire board and will not be accepted after the 12 o'clock noon deadline.
Yeah, when you say it won't be accepted after the 12 noon deadline, doesn't necessarily say that we can't address consent agenda. You can just say thereafter, no requests of seated board members for removing an item from the consent agenda will be addressed. Or. That's why legislation gets long.
This written request should be directed to the superintendent or designee and copied to the entire board. Thereafter, no requests of seated board members for removal of consent agenda items will be addressed.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
No.
Mr. Panarelo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, the recommended action is for the Board of School Directors to approve Policy 123.2 sudden cardiac arrest for the first reading and move it forward to the March 14th, 2023 committee, the whole meeting, first, second reading approval.
Dieroff moves.
Hogan seconds. Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Panarelo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is the asking for the Board of School Directors to approve Policy 707, Use of School Facilities for First Reading and Move It Forward to the March 14th, 2023 Committee, the whole meeting, first, second reading and approval, inclusive of administrative regulations. Nyman moves.
Hogan seconds.
Yeah, a couple. One is, have we changed, what have we changed as far as security concerns in there, how are we addressing those?
I did not put security information within the administrative regulations, I apologize. But I did have Mr. Schiel go out and make sure that all of our gates can lock and be secured. I have also reached out to our security company and we will make adjustments with our cameras to be able to be on motion. So we are making those adjustments as you had requested.
And procedurally, they'll be handled even as an addendum procedure that if we're going to rent something out, those, we make sure that those procedural, those security, the security things we're doing are in, are there, like if there's a corridor that has to be monitored by motion, that that is set up prior to leaving the building open that night, that is correct. And also, are we going to put in there that we're going to review the rates and groups yearly and update per year? So that would be a yearly review required of this procedure. Is that correct?
That is on the fee schedule and it does say, fee schedule will be reevaluated annually. We also had outlined the additional fee charges that would be applied for weekend, holiday, summer use requests so that it wasn't just additional fees, so that was clarified. We also put something within to, to address another concern with response, with respects to billing, that all payments are due no later than 30 days after facility use. Failure to pay within 30 day time limit will result in forfeiture of future facility use until fees are paid. So we can block anyone from securing any of our facilities if they are not paying their fees. So if you can't get in to reserve it, then you can't get in to use it.
Okay, thank you.
Did we check on the lighting fee to make sure that's adequate? We did. And actually, it is probably about triple the price of what it actually costs us for the lighting to be, the lights to be used in that stadium. Yes. We also checked on the history of use of Memorial Stadium and more people or groups have been denied access to utilizing it just based upon what they wanted to use it for and, you know, how, how, you know, it would not have been beneficial for us, like outside bans and just, just different things historically. So we did do some research there with respects to who was coming in and utilizing that.
Did we have, I didn't see anything in here that the different organizations that would be using it would have the students' membership or whatever it would be called for that group would have to be Boyertown students.
The school affiliated group organizations is defined as directly affiliated with the school district whose primary purpose is to support the curricular, co-curricular programs and those are our own, our own students, their parent, teacher groups, sports boosters, et cetera.
So if it's a group that not all the membership, the students are within the Boyertown School District, what classification is that?
Well, the, the school related youth groups and the community groups within the school district, the school related youth groups, we believe are, you know, students who are part of our programs with respects to our midget football and our Legion baseball. I don't know if we have any cross participation. We possibly do, but the bulk of the students are Boyertown students. So we, you know, allowed them to remain as a school related youth group. If you're something outside of our community or another organization, then there are additional fees that you would be responsible, they would be responsible for paying as well as the application fee we put there in those last two user groups.
Okay, because I know we did before and that was a problem. And we're not doing anything here about the, like the Y rents in the mornings and after school, that, that doesn't get included in here?
No, they, they were never a part of this part of the facility use. Those are contracts that we negotiate or, you know, agreements that we go into and they have been all put on notice that with the increase of fees that those contracts or agreements would be evaluated as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Quick scenario, Ms. Torsia. So you're saying if the group hasn't paid, they wouldn't be allowed to use the facility. Let's say they decide to pay in 90 days and we would allow them to use the facilities. There should be some kind of penalty put in there, a one and a half percent charge, you know, maybe given a 15 day grace period. But, you know, if they know they just have to pay a month before, they could be owing six months and that's, we paid, so we should be able to use the facilities again.
I believe, Mr. Zawada, since this is the first time that a fee structure has been updated and put into place as Mr. Brophy had recommended that we review annually and that after this year that it goes into place, we evaluate if we have had those circumstances and, you know, then working with our business office, I think that we could determine that we would need to, you know, move that direction.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Panarelo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next, the Board of School Directors approve the resolution calling for charter school funding reform. The average Pennsylvania school district spends millions of dollars in taxpayer money annually in mandatory payments to brick and mortar and cyber charter schools and these payments are calculated in a manner which requires, which requires districts to send more money to charter schools than in need, than is needed to operate their own programs and place a significant financial burden on districts' resources and taxpayers. I'm not going to read the entire resolution, but that was the opening part of it. Looking for a motion.
Zawada moves.
I'll second.
Yeah, I would like, if there's possibility, could we footnote on there that we originally approved this back in '21? And this is, this is just approving the changes to it? So it doesn't look like we're just now approving it?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to read this one part because I think it's really important for the public who maybe isn't going to go in and read the document to hear. It says, whereas further analysis of PDE data shows that in 2014-15, school districts paid charter schools more than $100 million for special education services in excess of what charter schools reported spending on special education. I think that's really an important point of advocacy for public schools because we are talking about taxpayer money. So this money that we're paying to charter schools for special education costs that are in excess of what they actually spend, it's your money. And, you know, that comes out of our, out of the monies that you guys give, that you guys pay us that we are supposed to be able to use to further education here in Boyertown. So I just think that that's a really important point of advocacy and something we should all think about and write our legislators about. So that's all for me. Thank you.
We might as well put a number behind it. It was over $5 million last year. So if you take into consideration what we budgeted, if we didn't have that five mil, we wouldn't have an issue right now. So it's, it's a significant amount of money.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Panarelo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And lastly, for the Board of School Directors to approve the personnel agenda as presented. Dieroff moves.
When is, are we going to approve Mr. Conick? Is it, it's not on this?
It does not have to come to approval.
Okay.
Not at this time.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Ms. Dieroff?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Ms. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Panarelo?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Public comment period number two. Nicole Zalts?
Good evening, Nicole Zalts. So some of you are going to really love me tonight because I'm going to talk about policy and I know how much you love hearing about policy. I am requesting that Policy 903 be brought back to the board and updated to eliminate the requirement to pre-register for public comment. During the discussions last year, multiple issues that could arise were brought to the attention of the board concerning pre-registration. At the February 14th meeting, we saw just how restrictive this policy really is when students wanted to speak during public comment but were not pre-registered. Make no mistake, I am happy the students were given the opportunity to speak by suspending the policy. However, this has now created a situation where the board can vote to pick and choose who they decide to suspend policy for. In my opinion, it would be in the best interest of the board, the community and the district to eliminate requiring pre-registration for public comment. If this policy is not changed, I fear there could be legal consequences for the district if presented with a situation again and the vote does not go in favor to suspend policy and allow others to speak. Community members, including myself, have spoken on Policy 903 in the past stating that it was restrictive and mentioning many issues that could arise, which included the situation we saw on February 14th. It has now been proven that the policy is restrictive and limits the ability for public participation. now been proven that the policy is restrictive and limits the ability for public participation. I also ask that there be a plan in place moving forward, that if there is an overflow of people attending meetings, that you have a speaker ready to be set up so the people in the foyer can hear. This has done, been done before at prior meetings when a large crowd was expected, but should also be something that is ready to go on demand, since we cannot always predict how many people will show up. It does not do us, community members, any good to attend a meeting if we cannot hear it. Thank you.
Thalia Savage.
Hi again. I wasn't going to do this, but I hate to beat a dead horse, but I think that a little bit of the history of the consent agenda was just slightly mischaracterized. Yes, it was created to create efficiency so that we could save a little bit of time. We had a lot on our plate. We were spending a lot of time in meetings. However, the way it operated was if anybody objected anytime, and I think I remember Mrs. Dieroff and Ms. Nyman objecting to something, and so what? We took it off. And then you vote on it after. So what? And I don't understand the comment about things coming up over and over again. You discuss them perhaps in committee before it comes to a vote, so that's two times. It's not over and over again. Once you vote on it, whether you voted on a consent or you took it out and you voted on it, it's done. So I don't understand that argument. And the other thing that kind of rubs me the wrong way about this three people need to ask to pull something off, it feels to me like you're encouraging people to deliberate behind the scenes by doing that. Sounds like if somebody wants to pull it off, that they're supposed to be calling all the board members and seeing if they can get three people. It just doesn't, it just doesn't feel right to me. And I don't know why you're spending so much time on it. It's just simple. Just my comments. But what I really wanted to say was, this is Public Schools Week, and it's a great time to thank all the people in all the roles that make our school district a great place for our students to be. So from the bottom of my heart, I say thank you, and I'm sure the board feels that way, too. Thank you.
Four comment. Just want to thank the young ladies again for their report. I'm glad you asked the question about half-days. It is important for us to understand too how the students feel. Other than that, I'm pretty much, I feel the meeting went very well tonight, and a lot of discussion was made.
Okay, I don't want to be the bearer of bad news either, but I asked to have my seat changed. What do I have to do to get my seat changed? Other people have been offered their seat to be changed, and then at the last minute, I guess they didn't feel they needed it anymore. And if anybody wants to come fill my hands, I am frozen here tonight, and I got a gaff got on my legs. I am cold. And I know you can't adjust the heat just for me, but when I sat on that side of the room, I didn't have a problem. So do I need an act of Congress, or what do I need to get my seat changed?
Just the willingness to sit next to the people on the other end, which you said you couldn't do.
What?
Yep.
I didn't say that.
Sure you did.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Again, we have dictatorship, not leadership.
More like the truth, but it's all right. Where would you like to sit first?
I don't tell administration what to do and get votes behind everybody's back.
What votes? It's no votes.
You know what I'm talking about.
I know what you're talking about. More hearsay.
No, it's not hearsay. It's about the coach. Are you saying you didn't do it?
You're done.
Yeah, that's right. I'm done. Truth hurts.
So I want to thank the girls, too, and I loved half-days when I was in high school as well. But I did vote against having a lot of half-days. I will admit that, but that's okay. I do agree that maybe we should look at Policy 903, you know, just to put that out there. I think it's something we could revisit again. And also, I know there are a lot of school boards that don't have a consent agenda where everything's together. I understand we want to move the meeting. I want to move it as quickly as everyone else here, too. But it might be something as board members, we might look at just, you know, not having a consent agenda. Thank you.
I think I'm going to look forward to the day where we start talking about education in this room and not board interaction with some of the public. That's not helping education. We talk about board policies. We don't talk about school policies. We talk about, the thing we did talk about was good. We talked about charter schools. Good. Wow, great. I'm glad to see we did that. So the other thing that I will point out that as far as the girls wrestling, they are at 101. That's a big issue in this, in the state. Took a long time to get there. We were, we were one of the first. We were in the 30s that approved that. So we were one of the pioneers in getting that through. So I want to, you know, I think that I want to thank the board for that because I have grandsons in wrestling, and this affected them. They don't go to Boyer Town, but this affected them across the, across the lane. So as we go forward, let's start talking about education. Let's not talk about board policies, and that's all the thing we talk about, or why I'm being pushed down, or why I can't get my words in, or why I can't bring up things several times. So let's just move forward with that.
Okay. So a few things. Congrats to the lady bears. It's always awesome to hear about women making such great accomplishments and kind of creating new pathways for other ladies. So that's really awesome. Congrats to them. I think it takes a lot of courage and a lot of fortitude. So really awesome. And, oh, I went to see Grease. I couldn't get tickets because it sold out, and I got them at the last minute. And it was phenomenal, as always. So congratulations to the cast, the crew, the music department, I mean, everybody who was involved. It was phenomenal. So much talent. Always thank you to Olivia and Lexi. It's always great to work with you. I appreciate your professionalism. So what else? I'm really glad that we did pass, or re, repass, or whatever we're calling it, the cyber charter funding resolution. It's really important, I think, for board members, and as I said during the comment, community members to understand how much that impacts public education and to really get to know your legislators and to advocate for fair funding in that, in that respect. Because like I said, it's your, it's your tax money. And then last, I just wanted to talk a little bit about decorum and respect. I think those are two really important words. And we are adults that sit here at this table. Regardless of whether we agree or disagree, we should be treating each other with decorum and respect. I know, I want to say it was in the last report, we heard about kids or students, maybe, not respecting each other in hallways and how that created negative feelings and negative, I'm trying to think of the word, negative environment. I think that it's really important that we set the example here at this board table, and we behave in ways that we expect our community, our students, and everyone else to behave. Again, whether we agree or disagree, and I disagree fundamentally with a few people here, and yet I am still friends with those people because I do not think that they are bad people because we have different views. It's not personal. So I think that's really important, that we really start to up our game in this boardroom and act like professionals. Thank you.
Lisa, real quick, what were the scalpel prices for those tickets?
I actually was like, I hope this is legit.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to the girls. I would hope that you start incorporating some of the elementary schools, because they have some functions coming up. So, okay, thank you. On that note, too, Earl Elementary is having their basket raffle on March 18, which is already sold out. Kudos to them. You can get on a waiting list if you want, but no guarantee on that. I also heard Boyer Town Elementary is going to be doing one. Those are the only two schools I know of right now that are going to be doing them. I would like, Mr. Panarello, if maybe under old business from here on in, that we can find a way to answer questions from past comments that the public have had, so that the whole and entire community gets to hear them, instead of Mrs. Torsia or any member of her personnel sends them an email. Sometimes other people have issues and would like to hear the same information. So if we could start maybe commenting that into the old business, I think that might help some of the public out. And trips, Mrs. Torsia, when they have an IEP or a 504, do we give them a nurse or something to go with them?
Only if it were something that was in their IEP or was a reason for their 504.
Okay, because I've heard from some people, and they're concerned their child, if their child wants to go with, they have to pay the additional fee for them to go along to administrate, to administer medication.
It depends on what the trip would be. If it is our sponsored trip, like the senior class trip to Disney, we make sure that a nurse is on, on the trip. So it, it really would depend upon what the circumstances or where the students are going. Field trips, day field trips, we always typically try to have a nurse, but every time we take a nurse out of the building for a class, we're now depriving hundreds of students, and there's not always a backup. So sometimes there might be a request being made for a parent to accommodate or, you know, something else for them to be eligible to attend. You know, like the teacher shortage, nurses are very hard to come by as well.
Okay, I'm going to have this parent, particular parent that contacted me, reach out to you. Thank you.
Yeah, this is, my question is to Patty. On the Vero project, we're getting $138,000 back and change, but I never think we got it. What did that project cost us?
I would have to pull that information out. I can get that together for you.
Okay. I'd like to have that. Thank you. And I was at the Grease musical on Friday night. It was very good, very good. I go every year.
I want to thank the girls. You guys did a great job tonight. I have to say, I agree with Mr. Brophy. I hope we can start moving forward and getting actual work done and not just the bickering. I hope we could all start respecting each other a little more, and I apologize to the public for the way you saw some of the people acting tonight. I also want to address the policy that people keep bringing up, the 903. So we didn't skirt anything. We didn't break our own policy. If you go to Section 1, subsection E, we didn't do anything special that night. It's actually built into the policy. So it's always been there, and it's for us to vote on something. We didn't just choose to do it. It's, it's in our policy. It was always there. So administrative regulations. That's it.
Upcoming meetings, our next meeting will be March 14. The Committee of the Whole Meeting at New Hanover. March 28 will be our voting meeting here at the Ed Center. April 11, Washington Elementary School will be the site for that meeting, and April 25, we'll be back here at the Education Center.